Good evening, we will call the August 24th Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order. It's now six fifteen and if you would rise with me.
Thank you, if you can have a roll call please, Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager here, Vice President Schochner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. Next item is the adoption of the agenda and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved, support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the agenda is adopted, which brings us to gratitude. I'm grateful for all of the loaded parking lots for helping people come in to see their classrooms.
I would second that, it's nice to see the campus full and buzzing, that's great. I'd also like to add, kind of secondhand gratitude, the first day of school went well for some of my household. Just would like to say thank you for that, and thanks for just all the encouragement and, do you want to give words of thanks? Great start to a school, just things that.
I would like to say for gratitude that with Mr. Simmons and the cellphone garages, I just, I really do, like, think that's a great idea. Um, just with the bullying and, you know, that Instagram site that really makes me upset, Mr. Ryan Rowe. Um, that hopefully it'll stop back from happening, so I appreciate it, Mr. Simmons. Let's just keep it up.
Second matter, I don't want my kids having their cellphones in class and it is nice that they can email me. And my son figured out that I have a Cedar Springs email now, public school email, so it's all like, oh, I got you mom. It's great, it's great.
I'm grateful that in attendance, we have not one school resource officer, but two. Uh, so joining Deputy Rowe tonight is Deputy Price. Uh, sorry, Charlie Price is a resident of Cedar Springs, parent of students in the district, and we're just grateful that you're part of the team. So thank you so very much.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, you're welcome. And you're over, you're kind of lodging at the high school.
That's right, Cedar Springs.
Um, and then Deputy Rowe is taking all of the spaces in the middle, so, yeah, but we're grateful that you're here.
My brother-in-law Matt Hooker gave you like high end links.
My goodness.
Yeah. Uh huh, across the street even lives. Yeah, when I, I asked and he, yeah, told me, he was like, great fit, he's like, it's gonna be a good addition to Ryan also.
He was my boss, but like.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, he's right across the street, he has mobile on today.
All right, moving on to our consent items, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved, support.
Vice President Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the items are approved. Discussion items, first up is the whole class novels for high school courses, recommendation for consideration, this is the second read. And we have Mr. Todd Simmons with us.
Really just an opportunity for board members to ask any questions that they have come up with over the last few days thinking about this. Uh, Mr. Simmons is here to answer any questions, I'll do my best to answer any questions. Uh, and if there are any questions that the pool of us cannot tackle, we'll call in reserves and get you the information that you need. But we're really, really, we're in that window of review, so no action will be taken on this item until mid-September, when we meet at the next time then. Uh, so really it's just an opportunity to see if there's anything out there that we need further clarification on, otherwise we can move forward.
I did a question, um, I was trying, I was, I thought it was good work and I really appreciate the feedback we got from, uh, Mr. Simmons, you know, giving us his perspective from other districts. I just was thinking about, uh, some of the feedback we got from some of the parents that kind of started us down this trail. And it seems like, um, and I could be wrong, I have to go back to the notes and see, but it seems like the, the parent that came to speak with us, that started this off was really around the independent choice reading material. And I just was curious the thinking behind having multiple policies for these three different groups versus one policy that governs all the books we make available to students. If, if you could share some thinking on that.
Yeah, I think really it's about, um, to be honest, it's about efficiency. So there's a greater level of scrutiny that goes into a whole class novel, because it really is a piece of work that would be, um, really used by the entire class. Uh, and so there's just more time spent in, uh, looking into that material to make sure that it's appropriate for a full class of, of students. Uh, whereas the choice reading selections, um, you know, again, we have a, we have a broad spectrum of clientele, and so, uh, there's not as much time going into depth. Uh, in terms of what items are selected, what items are not selected for, for a choice book, a choice material. I think we ordered seven hundred titles last spring, you know, and the, to put each of those titles through that level of rigor, we could do it. Well, we'd have to really increase staff significantly and that would be their full-time job, you know, we give that to them. So because we give some choices and we're working on developing some greater procedural steps to make sure that parent voice is honored in that access process. Yeah, it's really about time.
I just was saying, I didn't realize, seven hundred, I didn't realize we had that many titles we were ordering in seven hundreds a lot. I was thinking, there was four hundred on the reading list, I was thinking four hundred weren't required readings, so some of those could be drawn upon for these other categories. I didn't realize it was that many titles of.
Yeah, I don't even know how many titles we have to.
There's a lot of classroom libraries.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Across content areas, not just in the library. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
I just had a clarification question too about the whole class books. Um, and even just as you described, don't really describe them really would fit into curriculum under that umbrella. And if they should be approved by the board, just, again, just clarification, just under whole class books on page four. It says approved through the Director of Academic Services or the Board of Education. Just wondering if that's what the curriculum would be, if you would consider that curriculum. If that should be the board to align with other policy that we have regarding curriculum, or if this would fall in very different category.
So I'm going to refer that one to Jen, um, she's the expert, if that's okay. She can either respond via email or we can have her respond at the September meeting. But I know that that's, that's been a line of, uh, is it curriculum, is it materials, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess that's why I'm asking too, I guess.
Well, we're being estimated on, so I think we either or might want to come, just, just as a follow-up.
Yeah.
But I think she's working some updates.
Yeah, yeah.
But just a couple of comments though, to make again, I, I mean, I really appreciated all the hard work on this and, you know, just even all of the information about each of the books listed and just very clear. Just really excellent job, so I appreciated it very much.
Yeah, that credit goes to, all goes to Mr. Sabreley, when I already yelled like, we'll see, that's all, they did the work. And again, they're just, like I mentioned last Monday, they're just following the process that, you know, everybody who have done here to approve, but they're, they are following in with integrity and, and to your point, a lot of time now, but.
Yeah, I, just kind of interesting, I'll just quick share this, I was gonna share at the end of the meeting, but kind of fit in here. I attended the, uh, legal issues with M A S B, a training that they had last week, and this topic came up and they gave different court cases and instances of different, um, cases regarding curriculum. And I don't have my notes in front of me right now, but, I mean, I feel like this was what they were recommending as a best practice, not required, but a best practice. And, and I just, it just was very affirming that, I mean, this was a very good way to go, and for a lot of different reasons. I mean, for teachers, for the board, for, you know, parents, just for all liability issues, it, it's a really good process to have, so I was pleased. Again, and it was very affirming of the direction we're headed.
Is that the, I mean, it was at eleven on Thursday morning?
Yes.
Oh, that was there.
Oh, right.
So then, just for clarification, so next steps, these will be put on the thirty days, I believe, right, is what the policies said. And then notice of that being open to the public is this meeting.
Correct.
As in tip, like a typical curriculum changer, that's what. The key holder will be doing the next piece of work, and then it will be coming back to us, thank you. Alrighty, discussion item B, health and wellness equipment purchase proposal, Mr. Todd Simmons is presenting.
Awesome, thanks for having me, two weeks in a row. Wow, I'm honored. As I understand it, what Mr. Sullivan has asked me to share with you is something similar that I shared with our Booster Club. And with our Cedar Springs Foundation, and to be real, it's something I've shared with a large group of our kids. Our entire team of eighty-one at the high school, um, and it's something that I come from experience with. When people in general think of a weight room, there's a tendency to think of strictly athletics, at least a weight room in a high school context. In two thousand eight-nine, uh, at former Philly Schools, we, um, attacked a vision to increase not only what we had in our weight room. Uh, after the name, the Muscle Park, if you know anything about PW, that's a very, very fitting, uh, name for, uh, weight room, the Muscle Park. We attacked a vision and went after an intent that had nothing to do with athletics, but had everything to do with all students. Uh, we found that making, uh, exercise, a fiber of the culture within the school had a huge impact on emotional, mental health. Had a huge impact on cohesiveness of the culture, had a huge impact on the pride level with which students operated. It just had a huge impact on just the overall climate. So it is our intent, our vision here at Cedar Springs High School to do the same. Uh, we really want to get all, I mean, all of our kids exercising on a daily basis, somehow, someways, some shape, some form. That's a lot of kids, that's eleven hundred, you know, humans, um, but we're absolutely shooting for the moon and hoping to fall among the stars. Um, the way that we want that to happen, um, is first, it always starts with a strong why, which we feel like we have a very strong why. Of impacting kids, not just physically, all over emotionally and mentally, and I would even say socially, by bringing cohesiveness and pride. Uh, next after that is you have to have a strong who, we feel like we really have a strong who and a leader in Mr. Derek Ash. Uh, after that, it really comes down to the what or the how, the programming. We feel like because of Mr. Ash's expertise and his credentials and his experience, we feel like our program i- is second to none. But the next step is really the where and the what, and then, um, in no way, shape, or form am I bringing any type of dollar amount to you. I didn't do that with the boosters, I didn't do that with the foundation, Mr. Smith is my witness, he was there. All I did was state our vision to get all of our kids exercising, because we feel like that's best for all kids and a legacy of the culture we see. Um, enclosure, um, we started our strength and athleticism program at PW with the Muscle Park in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. It took time to break through some barriers. Some of those barriers were first getting females involved, because it's natural for our girls to not want to be in a closed space with snappy boys, okay? Uh, our next barrier was to break down the misnomer that the weight room is just for the athlete. Okay, and then our last barrier was just space and equipment. Well, I'm here to tell you that the first, um, I can report, I talked to Mr. Ash again this morning. This summer, we averaged between a hundred and sixty and two hundred students in our weight room on a daily basis. One hundred and sixty to two hundred students. A third of those, thirty-three percent of those were females. And he doesn't have a percentage, but a small percentage of that overall group were non-athletes. Kids that don't participate in our athletic program. That to me is hopeful, that to me is, is exciting, that to me is, the vision is starting slowly to become reality. And when we started at PW, no eight, no, oh nine, it took approximately five years to get there, and I knew we had arrived, because in two thousand fourteen, the student that led our after-school programming and our, one of our sessions during the summer was not an athlete. Um, in, in fact, he didn't participate in any sports, his entire career, I think he may have played golf at the end of his senior year, but rather he was the lead actor in our theater program. And he led all of our strength and athleticism program at PW as a student leader. That's kind of the vision, you know what I mean, to get all of our kids exercising, all of our kids growing their mental, emotional, social health, and really becoming a fiber of said culture. So that is kind of the why, the who, the what, the when, the where, um, again, not looking at any particular amounts of money, just wanted to share with you our vision to really impact our culture and do something that we believe is best for all ages.
Yeah, so we, um, we started engaging in these conversations, uh, you know, last year, midway through the year, and, uh, Mr. Ash and Mr. Simmons have put together some, uh, just, um, concepts in terms of what types of equipment. Uh, they were looking to bring on board in order to enhance that experience for all students, not just our athletes, but all students. And the number that we were initially looking at was somewhere in that range of forty thousand dollars. As we were looking at the budget, uh, back in February, March, you know, I was not comfortable making a commitment like that until we had a better feel for how we were going to end the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Um, but also, um, you know, just in terms of how we were going to be, uh, budgeting into the year for twenty-three, twenty-four. So, um, you know, about midway through, uh, the month of, of April into early May, um, you know, uh, Marty and I were comfortable, uh, allocating forty thousand dollars out of the budget to acquire equipment to help, you know, be a kind of a seed plant for this, for this initiative. Not, uh, you know, that's not gonna buy, uh, everything that they want, but it definitely will provide enough equipment so that we can safely service, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred students on a daily basis. Uh, whether it be during the school year or during the summer, uh, engaged in some type of fitness-based activity. Um, and so that was the number that we, we'd initially looked at now, um, you know, it takes time to put together, uh, a purchase like this. And so, uh, while they had, uh, you know, they had ideas in terms of what equipment they wanted, um, we couldn't just snap our fingers and, and make the, the purchase happen with the necessary approvals uh, from the board by the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. So, uh, Marty rolled, uh, that, uh, purchase amount over into the, uh, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. You know, a lot of those dollars were to be allocated out of the high school building budget. Um, uh, because Todd, it was very, um, mindful of some greater needs as far as the, the budget goes at the high school and how they can better serve the needs of more students. And so really it's, it's a lot of budgeting, um, you know, in April now, some of the budgeting is just shifting, uh, things from fiscal year to fiscal year or from town to a town. So in, in a nutshell, we're shifting dollars from the high school building budget, twenty-two, twenty-three, into, uh, this recommendation or consideration for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, again, because of the magnitude, uh, in, in the volume of students that this will have a positive impact on, um, we're very comfortable, uh, moving forward. And it's not just, you know, high school students, it's really middle level through high school students that we see having, having this, uh, investment have a positive influence. Uh, it's not gonna get us there when we, uh, start into the work at the high school, um, you know, building the auxiliary gym, being able to transition over, uh, that large space that was the weight, uh, that was the wrestling room into a, a weight facility or a more fitness-based facility, you know, um. Based on current numbers, um, we'll have a lot of space, uh, with opportunity to be mindful and selective about acquiring new equipment as budgets amount. You know, we, if we've got carryover and some of the items from the VOD, uh, that might be an area in which we could invest, uh, some additional resources. But again, it's one of those things, you know, we've, when, when we get to the end of the project, we've got to look at all of our needs and then prioritize that list. Uh, so there may be some additional things coming, um, for, for that program or for that initiative, uh, or maybe not. We want, we may have to be, uh, you know, we may have to be, uh, patient. Uh, you know, you can do a lot of fitness-based, uh, growth and development by, uh, doing things with minimal, uh, minimal expense. So it's about having vision, it's about, uh, having, uh, strong leadership, uh, in providing students with that safe and engaging experience. So they can feel better, uh, at the conclusion of the, of the work holiday, the concluding of the year. That's our, that's our rationale, uh, so what we're gonna be putting together, uh, if we've got some nods of approval from your perspective, we'll, uh, go ahead and then start doing the more detailed work of, of getting actual bids and quotes um, for the equipment that we really see will give us the biggest return on investment, um, at this point in time. It's going to be, um, not, uh, not fancy equipment, not elaborate equipment, but it'll be things like dumbbells and, you know, those types of things that are universally beneficial to the, to the, the widest, uh, number of, of students possible.
I think it's fantastic, so there's, there's not an approval, but I mean, we talked about, in previous meetings, we talked about, you know, SEL coming around, this, the whole student and some of the challenges that these students are seeing coming back from COVID and the behavioral issues that we've got. And this is a fantastic way to invest really in them physically, but also there's, there's tons of studies out there to talk about how exercise helps with that, uh, the social piece, so I think it's fantastic.
Love the social piece and the mental, emotional, yeah, I mean, all of it.
That's, that's one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I agree, and my wondering would be, in support wondering, um, how do you reach the non-athletes, or what did that look like in your past district? And how do you widen that window, so it's not like just for those people, right?
Yeah, it takes time, and that's, that's, that's something that we're very purposeful, because we know we only get four years, it goes quick. It took, it took, it took some time to get our girls into the weight, into the Muscle Park, it took time to get the non-athletes. The way that it started really was outside of Muscle Park, it was in our hallways and classrooms and building that ownership. And building that inclusive, that culture where, um, there was more curiosity than judgment, there was more, you know, acceptance than, than exclusion. So it, it took some time. It was interesting, we hosted a voluntary, uh, get-together after school on one of the last days of school, you know, during exams, and we had a decent turnout for being voluntary and not, you know, not being required. You know, Coach Ash spoke and myself and Mr. Moffett, and, um, it was really cool to see some kids that, as far as I know, don't participate in any of our athletic programming, attend that, and then continue on through the summer. It's, it's, long story short, it's just gonna take time and it's really up to me to ensure that we're building a true champions culture in our building, where all kids are welcome at all things.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for presenting.
Thank you.
Alright, discussion item C, the high school course change proposal, we've got Todd up to bed again, you know, you see Mr. Harden, so it looks like it's Mr. Simmons.
Alright. Thanks for having me back up. Guys were really scraping the bottom of the barrel. Okay, Coach H, I don't know if you were wearing suffocating tights, so he knew that he was gonna manage to be running in. So I'll share some of his bullet points for this evening regarding the change. First of all, some data points from Coach H, with ninety-five percent of teens having access to a smartphone, which is up twenty-two percent in the last eight years. We need to do our best to educate students about responsible use and application of them. Forty-five percent of teens have also stated that they are online almost constantly, and this course will allow us the chance to help them understand how to responsibly use a variety of platforms while working on media literacy continually as well. Today, ninety-seven percent of teens say they use the internet daily compared with ninety-two percent of teens in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, who were asked the same question. Increases, this, this course will increase the ability and proficiency of students to communicate and express and disseminate their thoughts and ideas in a wide and growing range of print and electronic media forms, and even international venues. Media literacy's inquiry process transforms teaching and frees the teacher to learn alongside with the students, becoming a guide on the side rather than a sage on the stage. And work with a number of other mediums, blogs, podcasts, et cetera, help in that mindset. Here's some other points of shifting class name and additions. To continue the education about media literacy, to foster students' creativity and knowledge base in order to produce great content that will allow students the chance to grow while being able to express themselves. To collaborate with professionals in the area of marketing, public relations, media, and more. These are already confirmed goals, uh, within collaboration with Mrs. McCarthy, our district communications officer. Will further develop students into beneficial members of twenty-first century quote-unquote real world. The marketing and public relations are essential skills across a number of industries and mediums. We utilize the classroom as an extension of the real world and work with the students to help educate, inform, and influence our school, community, area, state, moral. And media technologies are changing on a regular basis, and therefore, students need to be informed and educated on them regularly. Boil this down, from, from my perspective, this is something that Coach H has been talking to me about for quite some time, well, I've only been here for a year, but much of that time. Um, we see this as an opportunity to not only, uh, get our kids real-world experience in digital marketing, but maybe more importantly, help us control the narrative for our district. And what I'm, and with the kids at the front end of that, what I mean by that is through this course, two things that excite me most is that our students will be working side by side, at least once a week, at least this is our vision, with our district communications officer, helping her, Mrs. McCarthy, produce content that helps control. that helps control the narrative in our community and surrounding areas. And number two, our vision, albeit an utopian at the front end, I saw this work at my previous district. We hope to build social media ambassadors where our kids are using things that can at times be the bane of our existence as parents and educators, Instagram, TikTok, et cetera, to again, control the narrative and help influence the narrative in our community and surrounding areas. I just see that as being such tremendous potential when you've got our kids leading that charge. Whether it be marketing our district, celebrating our district, acknowledging stakeholders within our district, and all doing it within their wheelhouse, right? This is the world in which they live. As excited as we all are, at least in this room, about cellphone garages, I can tell you eleven hundred human beings that aren't as excited because they live through that thing in their hand, right? Why not use that? Why not use that as a weapon to help in, you know, to help include our community? And again, control that narrative in a positive way through acknowledgement, celebration and marketing, the champion things we have going on. So that was my little aside. Um what questions do you have?
I had a question. I I mean, this sounds wonderful. I am in support of this. I just am curious if other districts have been looked at to kind of compare what they were doing and learn from them.
Yeah, I can I can only speak from my experience. I do believe Coach H in his presentation here has a bunch of citations. Um I I'd have to, you know, direct you to him to get that intel. But at Plomo Valley, we had a social media ambassador when I was much smaller, only five hundred kids in my building. But Ayla Smith ran all the social media for the district. So she was, you know, taking photos in the hallway, running it through a root grid, you know, through a norms, through expectations that were set by um by the district leadership, Mrs. Goodman, by the building leadership in both buildings and then pushed out to the community via Instagram, Facebook and Twitter. Um it's, I hope I'm not being too blunt, but there's a narrative out there. There's always gonna be a narrative. I guess I'd rather be the one helping drive the truth than allowing people who never stepped foot in our buildings, never stepped foot in our classrooms, never set foot in our extracurricular venues. I'd rather us lead that than those folks that are posting about us. So I've seen the value of that. I tried to um control the narrative via my very small following via Twitter. Um maybe I'm too um old school, maybe I need to move on to Instagram. Never use Snapchat, but um I mean, I I really believe in trying to influence the narrative with truth, you know, what's actually happening. So I have seen it positively in another place, but I could have Coach H's shared this forever.
I I just was curious because I I've seen it. I was thinking of Sparta in particular, which I know zero details. But I just I had met a kid there and he was telling me everything he was doing and I was just so impressed. I just was just amazed. So I just was thinking, I I mean, I'm sure the research has been done. I just was thinking, you know, let's not reinvent the wheel. We know of other, you know, no other districts doing it really well.
Yeah.
And I think that's one of the things, um you know, much of this content, first, thank you, Mr. Simmons, for being a part of this. But um in in many ways, this content is being shared, um but it's oftentimes through um uh independent studies.
It's been a day.
You're here. You want a water?
I'm good. I need a nap. It's been a great.
Content's being shared via independent study and some other ways. So this really just helps us formulate formalize that 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 set, you know, providing some more continuity from student experience to student experience uh in this area of media and media production and marketing, you know, to that point of, you know, the greatest voice, the greatest marketing voice uh in our district is it in the mouths of our students. It's what types of experiences are they sharing when they get home? What types of experiences are they sharing on social media? If they're sharing amazing experiences, guess what? That's only going to, that's going to become our narrative. Uh if they can't wait to get back to school the next day, or they can't wait to get back to school the next year, that means we're doing our work well. Uh and and parents will listen to that narrative and and neighbors and community members, that is, that's the voice we need um to to make sure that it's the sharing, the 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 truth, the experiences that our students have. But it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're doing the things that we need to do to make sure the students have great experiences. Uh you know, Jeff Revard asked me an interview question uh when I was interviewing for this position, how do you earn people's trust? And I said, well, you do it by doing trustworthy things. You know, how do we how do we get students talking about them having positive experiences at school? Will we make sure that they're having positive experiences at school? Um and so that's that's an op- opportunity to be young and proud of us. So I'll let you take it with you.
I have no idea what I answered. So essentially, we're at the point of TV video production. Name change to media production.
Yes.
And then, Mr. uh Simmons, sorry. He went through all of the bullet points that you you had requested.
Yeah, I laid out all that stuff. I dread my stomach really good.
Yeah.
Um no, I think the reason for the shift and all that stuff is media changes every day. Like, it really does. And to be honest, like, it's hard to catch up as an adult, as a person, even as a kid, because you're bombarded with these things on a on a constant basis. I haven't provided the facts or anything like that, but like ninety-four percent of our kids uh have access to a cellphone on a regular basis. And those ninety-six percent, like, those kids that have even just YouTube on their phone and are watching YouTube videos is in the ninety percent, I'm confused research. Um kids are online constantly, you know what I mean? If I was sitting in my TV pro class, but I do my my right now, the first, not about a week and a half, like eight days of school uh in that class is media literacy, which to be honest, isn't enough. Uh because our kids get phone books, our kids have cell phones. I mean, I have a stepdaughter now and she's thirteen and she is obsessed with TikTok and can't get off of it. Um and I think we need to do a better job of educating our kids on how to use technology, how to be media literate and how to be savvy. But at the same time, how to create and share your experiences as well. Um the shift came up like a spur of ideas between uh Mr. Simmons, Mr. Johns, Mr. Moffett, uh Miss Mr. Taylor Lane and all that stuff over the summer. And it was just a lot of conversations and um things like that. And it was for that shift in years to make things more applicable to our kids across the style. Uh in that media productions two course where the is the main shift has the aspects of media literacy and they're still re-iterating that all the time, but it's how to create stuff and how to be positive and how to share a positive voice and how to be literate, how to really um find your educated voice, so to speak. Um because the big part of media literacy is is vetting information and breaking things down and doing that. And we need to do that constantly. Uh and I think the shift allows that. And then it gives a real-world experience, like you both probably mentioned, because I typed all that stuff up and I was like, I'll be late, so I thought I'd start later. Um and and that aspect of working with PR and marketing, uh and working with Amy McCarthy in our communications office, like I've heard, just a spur of it, spur sort of meeting, I wanted to talk to her for a few minutes and it turned into like an hour and a half conversation um in her office. And she wants to come down and be actively involved with those kids to try to figure out the marketing, PR, communications aspect. Um I have interest in other aspects, people at PR and marketing as well. My my wife knows that, which is still weird to say, sorry. I got married in June, it's still a little weird. Really weird. Uh but she, I was like, I would love to read it down, so I'd love to break it down and what what she does. She's getting a degree from Ohio or uh maybe Ohio. Don't hold that against her. Um but like that aspect of bringing the world more connections, because as kids go and the and the aspects of moving on in the future, there's a lot of kids that are doing their own thing. What they they might not be going on to a post-secondary education. We have a large abundance of kids that are doing their own path, that are jumping into the workforce right away, or that are starting businesses. I think back just even recently, um I dealt with people at Northland Tire, which is all Cedar and it's it's the Carlsons. Um I've dealt with uh Kyle Fort who graduated a year ago, who started his own detailing business. Like, that's what these people's passions are. And if they have a way to spread that knowledge or spread that passion out to the community as well, then marketing and PR stuff works for them as well. Providing real-world skills, I think um that'd be applicable to any any student moving on, regardless of that. Um and I think media is part of our lives every day, good or bad, mostly bad. But they have that ability to share your voice and do those things. And our voice at the high school level within the Cedar Springs TV class, um like I'll show some comparisons, like our CF Public Schools YouTube page has about a hundred and eighty subscribers to it, which is pretty low for a community here. The the stuff we do in the TV class, like the lift up and something go really big, we're almost two thousand. So our voice that we have is a is a bit a bit of a broader reach. And I'd love to work with Amy as well on that to broaden our reach as well. Um and rather than hiring a PR firm or a marketing firm to do it, let's empower our students to do it. And I think that's a huge thing. Um I would think that most of the kids that come out of my program in in that element or the leader element would have positives to say positive things to say about it. That's a good learning experience and a good way to push them and a good experience there. But we're just trying to give them that that real-world experience that will allow them to grow and show, so to speak. Uh and I think if we're proactive about it, uh we'll be even better off. Um the kids in my TV class and and the the class roster for that class right now is a lot of the kids I've added in my TV classes or my advanced TV class that show a passion for it and really want to get involved and do those things. Um two of my favorites are in there this year that sort of steam role that lifted up in in the spring and just champed it. Like, those are the kids that you want waving the flag for Cedar Springs, you know? And I think if we do a better job of that, more power to us. And I think in today's day and age, and I don't know where the conversation, I heard uh some what Mr. Smith said. We're a day and age now where we can quote-unquote sell our school, if that makes sense. And uh because you don't need to work or live close to downtown to work downtown anymore. Because a lot of people are working from their home owners or a coffee shop. And they want to be in a community where they feel valued, they feel good, they know that cool stuff happens. I met with a kid that was coming into school, I think it was Thursday, sitting in my room doing work. And Mr. Saladi, the high school counselor, was taking a kid on a tour. And she was like, Rockford, Russia, and stuff, we're bringing her up here. We saw your lift up. It was great. Showcase the school so much more. We watched it a few times. And like, that was their talking point. Worst comes to the worst, we get ten students to come our way. Our numbers go up, reputation goes up, our conversations go up, and we look better and we look look like we're younger and stuff. And I think uh it's a chance. And I think it's a good opportunity to do that. And I love the fact we try to empower things to. What questions do you have?
I just had asked a question right before you came in. I just was curious if there had been other districts that you had looked at just to help put the pieces together. Um I love the I love the kind of.
To be frank, there's not a lot of schools that do it yet. Like, and I think we're missing the boat out there. Do you know what I mean? Because I think you can go play in like Rockford or other marketing class or a business class that talks about it. The Beyond the Rocket offer, now using that, Beyond the Rock, Rockford's TV production program is hands-down the best of the state. Like, it's not even close. You know, um and they don't do that stuff. They do a kind of kind of video of the showcase highlights. But realistically, I don't know of a school that has sort of a hybrid sort of thing like this, where it takes all of this and puts it into one. Um but the one thing I can say about with that is, is if you if you know me at all, I will work in that regard. You know, and I eat everything else like, we're gonna push and try to figure things out and and we'll work at it. Uh and I think, going back to what I said a little bit, like, those kids have a bigger voice than me a lot. And I think in the past, we've missed the boat in our district a little bit, no offense, um with our advertising and marketing aspect of successful students. Um Thomas Wade, a few years ago, we did a Harvard when nobody else around the area did. Like, that should be known to you. Uh our valet training and solicitorian last year going Brown University, Ivy League, you know, that's going to John's not being a medical school, which is the top five medical school in the world. Like, we need to find those kids to do that. Um or and I mean, other side, that's not an academic thing. Um and this is the side that I guess helped. Um it did a, the student council did like a fun color run for me. As a, I don't want my name on it, but that's what it started in. The kid that won it this year is Gerald Ronald. You know him at all? The essay that that kid wrote, like, I'm my hate, my parents are standing up right now because it was so personal. The kid coming from the streets of the Philippines, like begging for food, being abused, doing all this other stuff with his brother, being orphaned for six years, seven years from that, and then making it, doing the stuff, and then becoming varsity athlete. Now he's a now he's a golfer at uh Mount Combe Community. Like, those are our stories. Those are our successes. And the purpose of that class is to even showcase more of that. Teach kids how to do it, but then tell our kids to share it. Sorry, what was the answer?
Yeah, no, that's great. Yeah.
Great, love it. But I think it's great because Colleen Pearson was the innovator for Rockford anyways for for the media TV film production. And so I think it's great for you to be the innovator for this aspect of media. So I think it just takes just kind of having, you know what, to go forward and do it.
Just think of time of her energy.
Great.
And I think with time of her energy, you can do a lot of that stuff. Positive energy, of course.
I think it sounds great. I don't have any questions.
So this is an item that we have action this evening, if you're comfortable. Um in doing so, it would just enable us to streamline some things, empower school and get students enrolled in the media productions class uh instead of the team. Once you start a semester, we can't easily switch things over. So if you're comfortable with the
We're starting now. We've proven tonight it hurts now.
We would get kids rolling.
And you've already jumped, so it's not like a big surprise.
No, the the kids I talked to, and I talked to a whole a good chunk of them, and it's like, it's hard to schedule kids. Like, in our class in our district, I said this to Simmons, like, the APs a day and like a five-year language program in Spanish, like, it's hard. Um and I've talked to a number of kids and the kids I talked to, like, one of the kids was able to get into the second semester and then study everything. They called the body, he's like, I want to be the first. Let's go. And I love that stuff. So the kids aren't gonna be surprised. They already know we've got we've got a roster in there that's constantly changing based on schedules. Um but I expect the quarter, the first quarter to be hopefully a decent size, but I hope we put up some quality stuff that our kids can use it.
So is there a way for us to advertise that we offer this type of program so kiddos from other districts?
I think if it, I think my goal would be, Mr. would be that the program advertised itself. Do you know what I mean? Like, we can't, like, the lift up, that girl came in the office, she's like, yeah, watch that. My mom was like, you watch that? I was like, that's cool. That word-of-mouth stuff was crazy. Uh the lift up here, the one we did in the spring this year is just over around three hundred or thirty thousand views right now, which seems like a lot, but the first one we did in two thousand fourteen was a hundred and thirty thousand. Like, we've got to find different ways, because YouTube's still high, but the other stuff is more like wildfire. You know, and it's it's all different, it's to see. So if we can have an influence and a voice in there to make it better for our kids, the world's not gonna get better. Plus, too, to be honest, social media could be accessible, which I'm sure preaching to the choir on that one.
The other really neat aspect of this shift is that, you know, one of the visions when we moved forward with a communication specialist um was to have the person that we hire for that person for that position, you know, be actively involved with our students and, you know, use that as a springboard, use that person as a resource for programs like this.
And Amy was like, Amy was super excited when I talked to her that one day. So and there are many more conversations that will happen for sure throughout the year. She like, I could buy one day a week where I get down there every day with the kids, like, that'd be awesome. And I work with somebody that does it for a living that passes on. It's like, my dream job now, like, I would like, oh, I just grabbed it. I spoke my dream job, I'd be like an SID, which is a sports information director at college, which I think would be phenomenal. You can travel with teams, you're doing that stuff, you're showcasing videos, like, that'd be so cool. That job didn't exist when I was in high school.
I have a question that's only barely related. That's how I ask my questions nowadays, apparently. Um so at the library, when we take videos, take pictures, use anything like that of anyone under eighteen, a parent has to sign off on that because of litigation at school. How do we approach that as a school when it comes to lift-ups, for instance, or anything that might happen in this?
So our school has a blanket house.
Yeah.
When you, it's in your student handbook. It's in your your enrollment stuff. So unless you opt out, you're good. And in my career of doing the TV stuff, I had one student at the high school that dropped out.
Okay.
And that's been ten years. Now, and that's been ten years of work.
I should have been reading every word of the handbook ever since I started on here, so I should have known that, but I forgot.
I should read the terms, terms agreements that I involve in, I don't, don't do that, so. So, that was right, correct, sorry?
You are.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I, that's the last thing I want to do, is, is put a case, so usually the first week to school, I ask, do we have any opt-out cases, things like that? Um, and they, they have, if they opt out, they usually have that everything, like, your book photos, school photos, and that's usually cases just with kids in home lives and things like that.
Is that just the high school, or that's the whole district?
Take all, district wise. Which is, well, if you go through district wise stuff, because the, the lift up plan this year is ridiculous.
Okay.
It is takeable. We're gonna try to do what takeable, with a law that we're building in all of our, in every student in our district. It's, I mean, it'd be really good.
Long, so.
Or a dumpster fight.
And school board members.
However, we have, we have police escorts.
Can school board members be involved in?
Well, I got, we can use them, we can go to hell, that's true, this is the old high school. We go through the tunnels, or.
I think we're good, are we good? All right, do you want this water and the snacks?
We'll all go to dinner, so.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to not quite as exciting. This is spring season twenty twenty-three, Neil and House's recommendations, four three. Here we are.
Yeah, so the only new item in this packet of artifacts, uh, is, um, you'll, you'll note that there's a policy eighty-three ninety, animals on district property version two point O. Uh, and what I, what I tried to accompany, or tried to incorporate in that draft, was acknowledgement that we do have foot traffic on campus, and that it is okay to have people on campus with pets, uh, as long as there are some parameters around which they are functioning. And so, uh, if you'll note, if, if, the, the additions are down at the bottom. Um, the system would not let me designate a new color for change, and so you'll notice the first change under the heading, non-service animals in schools and elsewhere on district property during the school day, or at school events. And then the first line of that simply states, gives a time parameter. So between the hours of six AM until four PM, on days in which school is in session, or at school events. Uh, so we tried to eliminate, or we tried to limit, and say that animals could be permitted during those times, under the following guidelines. Um, and so that does, uh, it, it spells out some clarity in terms of when we can have animals on campus, uh, again, with specific guidelines. So the only time an animal could be on campus between six AM and four PM, or a school event, is if it met the following criteria, okay? And then the next piece, uh, it says, use of district sidewalks, roads, and lawns for the purpose of walking exercise with non-service animals. And then it goes in and gives some parameters, when that would be permissible. And I captured some language from some other artifacts, some other research that I had done, um, you know, specifying. You can have a dog on the sidewalk, you can have a dog or an animal on the road, on the lawn areas, uh, in a safe and responsible manner, that was consistent language, um, with several of the resources that I had looked at. But then, you know, gives specific hours, so from four PM to ten PM, uh, on days when school is in session, or from six AM to ten PM, on days in which school is not in session. Uh, then I also included, and an, animals must be on a minimum of six-foot leash at all times. Uh, owners must clean up after their animals, and then I made special notes to state that non-service animals are not permitted on athletic fields or playgrounds at any time. So I tried to create and encapsulate the realities of what we do. Um, just another option, or just something for consideration.
Maybe I'm dense right now, but what does it mean, it must be at least a six-foot leash, like, if it's on a four-foot leash, that's not allowed, or if it's on a twelve feet, so.
Six feet or less.
It has to be six feet or less.
Yeah, so.
Because that's not the way it reads to me. It reads to me, it, it needs to be six feet or more.
Yeah, okay, let me, let me.
Okay, and we're, so, like, if they, I'm not saying I do this, but I've seen people, like, have their little dog in a front carrier, that would be fine, because that's less than six feet. But you, what you don't, what you're not looking for is one with like, or, or retractable, like, twenty-foot leash.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
But that's good, because that's, if somebody can have that.
Yeah. There's other people that are at least as dumb as me.
No. I pulled that right out of another, um, policy, so.
I think it represents reality. Yeah, I know it was tricky, but I feel like this is the best action we've seen.
Kind of pulls together several different resources to that, like that.
I know I started with a question, but I really liked the rest of it.
No, that's good, it's those questions that make it better.
Can I ask a fair question? So, thinking about the stadium, so hypothetically, someone could bring their non-service animal into the stadium to watch a game, but the animals are never allowed on the field, or?
They couldn't bring the animal in, because the previous provision would kick in, so animals are permitted in schools or elsewhere on district property between the hours of uh, six AM, or, uh, at a school event, uh, only when they follow the following parameters. It's really messy.
There is a dog, there is a no dog sign in the stadium.
Yeah, it really is messy.
Just, yeah, we did, right, yes, yeah, I thought that before, but I didn't know, yeah, this would be changing now, but I, I see.
Yeah, it's like a math cruise, from college, like, if this, then this, or if, you know, it is messy, it's not natural intuitive language.
But it tries to address as many scenarios.
Right. Like, you can bring a dog, or an animal, um, during these times, under these conditions. And then you can bring your animal during these times, under these conditions. There, there are fewer conditions, they're really, the only conditions in, between, you know, at a non-school event, um, between four and ten PM is, they've got to be on a leash that is at least six feet long, no, was somewhere between zero feet and six.
See, even when you said it out loud, you confused yourself, didn't you?
I did. Um, and, uh, it's got to be on a, on a sidewalk, or road, or a lawn area, it can't be on fields at any time, they can't be on playgrounds at any time. Um, so there, there, it just spells out conditions for these periods of time, on these days, as school events, and then these periods of time, on days when we don't have school in session, where there's none either.
Any other questions about the dog policy, animal policy?
I know we've had kind of exhausted conversation, but I would just say, you know, to have a policy that we know is not reality, and we have no intention of enforcing it, puts us in a bad place. So I know we've spent a lot of time on this, but I think it really puts the district in a good place, with a policy that we intend to follow, and, uh, we can communicate, even though there's maybe some basic programming from Counter of Sixty-four about if-then statements out there, at, at least we are expressing what the expectation is, and we can communicate.
And it feels reasonable.
Yeah.
Not a fraction nice, we can think about it, but the other thing that I, um, back to sixty-three twenty, the purchasing and acquisition services, not equal within me some sources of what he looked at, and I don't link those ones to everybody, so I would keep those forwarded to you now.
I, I'll include those in our Word pack.
Okay, thank you, I'll include them. Uploading, so we can look for that for comparison to other districts. We just want it to be substantial, not just what we think works for us, but then, but we're, we're doing that bigger, looking at it with a bigger mind. Are any other points of interest, contact, comment? We will see you later. Okay, moving on to discussion item E, the flight plan two point O.
Yeah, really no new discussion for this evening, I just included several data points for you to look at, and then, uh, we can circle back if there are any other questions, or wonderings, or direction from the board table, uh, and look for uh, some further direction or approval on September eleventh. And then we'll, we'll launch that work, and set the course for the next three years.
We'll see this again, but is there any other comments right now? All right, moving on, we have our public comments, do we have any public comments that we've been notified of? Or anybody that would like to address the board for their three minutes, the board will not be responding, but we would, Mr. Smith will be following up if we have any issue. Going once.
We're talking to your job.
One point, free time, and we are closing public comments. All right, moving on to our lone action item for this evening, is, we have before us, the high school course change proposal, Media Production One and Media Production Two will be the title of the courses, I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Judge Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Patton.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The motion carries, and we're looking forward to positive stories. All right, communications, but Board of Education, you are up to date, nothing's happened between either an email or last time you met, which was last week? Just in case you needed a paper number. So, does anybody else have anything they want to share?
Just what I shared earlier, just I attended the M A S B Legal Issues Zoom meeting, and covered a lot of information, so it was, it was good, it was, it was helpful, yeah.
Thank you for doing that, thank you for giving.
You're very welcome.
You have any communications for?
I do, um, I just want to, uh, call your attention to the twenty-twenty-three M A S B call for delegates, uh, for their uh, fall conference, and so I just included a letter that came to me, I'm assuming that you got it as well, but I'm just looking for an individual from this board to represent the Board of Education from Cedar Springs Public Schools, at the M A S B Fall Conference in November, so something to put on, uh, put on your horizon, uh, for consideration. And then I also wanted to just share, um, we are, uh, dialed in and good to go with, uh, Kent County for the election, uh, for giving our question on the ballot for November seventh. Uh, thank you to the incredible work and hard, uh, efforts from, from Gus, and then a little bit of uh, freedom and flex, flexibility on the part of Tracy Slager, as I uh, interrupted her during a conference down in Copperville, to get her signature on a document that we need. But it was all good, so, uh, so we're dialed in and ready to go. Uh, and then the last thing I wanted to share is, uh, just to announce that we have, uh, identified, uh, an individual to serve Region One as our, uh, emergency response, uh, security coordinator. Uh, his name is, um, John Witzkowski, John Witkowski. Uh, comes to us, uh, twenty-six year, uh, outstanding career with the Grand Rapids Public, or Grand Rapids uh, City Police Department. Um, he just has, uh, an incredible resume, uh, to, to, of experiences that will, uh, go put to good use uh, for us, uh, as a person who's going to lead that emergency response. Uh, work in the district, so it's, uh, it's, it's exciting, we are, no one else is doing this, but I have the venture that a lot of people will, will be doing it in the very near future, once they see uh, how we're able to effectively support the needs of, uh, the districts in northern Kent County with a coordinated response to emergencies. You know, it's one thing, if we have a crisis here, um, you know, our team can handle a lot. But, um, when you're in the throes of a crisis like that, um, we have to really be doing two things, we have to be managing the crisis, we also have to be supporting the humans uh, in the work. What this response, uh, approach is going to enable us to do is, if there's a crisis in Sparta, um, we're gonna send a team to Sparta. And, uh, then Joel can focus on supporting the, the people and the students in Sparta, and we're gonna be there with John's guidance and direction to manage the crisis. Um, and so that's, that's the revolutionary piece, uh, to this work. So we're, we're, that, just that piece alone, knowing that we're gonna have that team, that coordinated team of experts coming in, and, and all having the same playbook, uh, is gonna really bring a level of peace, but also higher level of effectiveness to our ability to manage those, you know, unbelievably challenging events. So, thank you for your patience, uh, and your supportive participation. And he'll start on September seventh. So you're excited for him.
Very good. All right, moving on to planning, our next meeting is September eleventh, it's a six forty-five meeting, we do only have one meeting scheduled for September, unless we would need special meeting.
And we do have pictures scheduled.
Oh, thank you, sorry, yes.
Wear tux, or a formal, formal gown.
Right.
Your shoes, formal gown, you wear the formal gown, or wear the tux.
All right, okay, having no more business before us, let's stand at church at seven twenty-three.